Adrian Anne Brightfelder, you are hereby, city clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the city council to be held on Monday, February 12th, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the historic federal building for the purpose of conducting a work session on the Chaplain Schmidt Island redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for February 12th, 2024. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the city council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousseau.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And city attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is the Chaplain Schmidt Island redevelopment plan. I will turn it over to Economic Development Director Jill Connors.
The other one. Yep, there you go.
I thought, why is that over there? Jill Connors, Economic Development Director. Here for your entertainment this evening, apparently. We've got a presentation for you. Just to give you an update on what's been happening, we've been getting together for over a year now as city staff, DRA, some hired consultants to put together a redevelopment plan for Chaplain Schmidt Island. Just to let you know that this is not anything new. This is a product of a master plan that was adopted in 2014. There were some updates in 2017 and again in 2019. And now, that's the master plan giving, you know, kind of the general direction. What we've been working on now is the redevelopment plan. So more of the implementation plan, getting down to the nitty gritty of the vision. And so this evening, I'm going to hand it over right now to DRA, President Alex Dixon, to give you a little bit more information before he passes it off to the hired consultants. Thank you. Alex.
Alex Dixon, President and CEO at Q Casino and DRA. It's a pleasure to be back before you all, to the city manager, to the mayor, the council. It's a pleasure. This is another exciting day. Some of them, some exciting days come with kind of shovels in the ground. This is an exciting day with a PowerPoint. But you need to embrace both with equal vigor. Because where this is critical is about the momentum that is developing on Schmidt Island. We have 222 acres as a community that is owned by the city of Dubuque that has a number of subtenants and leases that are taking place on the island. But this is all about us taking our rightful place in what is, has emerged in what Dr. Bo Bernhard from University of Nevada, Las Vegas calls is the fun economy. And the fun economy comprises tourism, entertainment, as well as sports and entertainment. And so we fall in the activities that take place on Schmidt Island are squarely within that. And that represents almost 14% of global GDP can be quantified by the fun economy. And it's the things that we do almost after work and on the weekends. And we have a great opportunity to leverage this great public resource to do amazing things. You have heard about and have authorized over the last couple of years a number of great private development that's taken place on the land that's leased by Q Casino and DRA. We're in the midst of a $100 million development that, you know, just a couple of the highlights as a reminder. We've already built our temporary casino that's been open. We're underway of construction. And this summer, we'll be opening up a brand new casino floor. We then, later this year, will be breaking ground on a new hotel. And then we've got the family entertainment zone that by this winter will open up and we'll be able to welcome our families indoors. And then in the summer of 26, we'll open up a brand new outdoor amphitheater with the support of Destination Iowa. And so those are all things that are happening on one portion of the island. But as you all know, this body has approved back in 2014 a comprehensive development, excuse me, a comprehensive master plan for Schmidt Island. And so what this work is really, it's taking those aspirations that were outlined in the master plan and now putting together a plan of action. And so as a part of that, you have to be rooted in basic market economics. And so you're going to hear a little bit about that. But it's also going to take some of the portions that were outlined in the master plan and breaking these down into digestible parts so that you all have an opportunity to review, channel the feedback from the people that you represent, so that you can give us feedback in terms of the DRA to help make these plans a reality. And so tonight, there won't be any, you know, big decisions. There's no, you know, immediate aha. But it's taking a number of the environmental as well as development aspects that are outlined in the plan that you already improved and pushing it forward along the next steps. But totally separate from this development plan, there's been so many amazing activities as well as momentum that has been built on the island. So here's just a quick update of a couple of things that have moved along. So going to I'm On Arena. This is just by the mere name and nature of it. Many of you attended the kickoff ceremony where we named that arena. As you all know, we, the DRA, in partnership with our board chair from the Schmidt Island Development Corporation, are managing that facility on the city's behalf. We're seeing record attendance in that facility from the Dubuque Fighting Saints. We have so many different activities that take place inside, whether it be the kids skate with Santa. We had a Schmidt Island Day on the island. But we're really leveraging the investment that you've made into that building to get the most out of it. We've also partnered with the Fighting Saints where we have a new TV inside the facility where people are able to see instant replay when they visit the arena, which is an amazing amenity that Conlon participated to help purchase that. And then inside, we are well along the way of conducting the RFP for the food concessions that are going to make some improvements in there. So we limit the amount of subsidy that we need from the city of Dubuque. And so it's a great partnership and that's literally, I want to thank Marie Ware as well as the city manager for their leadership and stewardship to allow us to enter into that facility. If we then look throughout the remainder of the island, you see the Ashley Henson Grant, that the trail that was funded through the federal government that is under construction. We had to take a little pause for this thing called snow. But in the spring, we'll be back to get that finished. The Veterans Memorial. We had our first Memorial Day Parade on the island. This was, we had to take a pause as it related to hosting the Memorial Day Parade for so many of our veterans in the community. And so that has now moved to Schmidt Island. And so we worked with veterans groups to be able to move forward. And so it's so amazing because now you're able to start to see the hard hats, the construction, the breaking ground of so many things that are taking place on the island. And tonight is just another step of literally preparing us for this to become the great island destination that we know it can become. So as we review, feel free to ask any questions kind of along the way. But there's a lot of material. We want to make sure that we give Ryan and team an opportunity to move forward. But I want to thank this body for your active participation. Every one of you have been down to the island, have heard my pitch directly. We appreciate you for making this a priority as a part of goal setting a few years back. And I really want to thank our team. You know, we've got Rick, Jill, Steve, Wally, Marie, Kathy, and others from your staff who literally, we meet every week, every week to be able to push this forward. And so when you think of public-private partnership, this is what it looks like. And so thank you for your leadership. And with that, I'll introduce Ryan to come on up from RDG. We're very appreciative. He's our quarterback on this or our one-throat-to-choke, as we like to say at the DRA. So thank you. Congrats. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alex. Chris Brewer with ACOM will also be joining us tonight. So with that, we'll jump right into the agenda for this evening. We're going to share a little bit more about the vision and the background, about how this has come to be. We're going to talk through the development program. And we've made some decisions about what works. And so we'll talk a little bit about that, the economics, and then next steps. So our development vision, so the development plan purpose, why are we doing this now? I think Alex just gave you a great introduction, the summary as to why this makes sense. But I think the second bullet here on the screen, the market conditions have changed considerably from 2014 and 2017. And then I would say, and I think Chris would echo this, they've changed considerably since we met with you last. All of you are probably aware of what's happening in terms of lending from the private side. And so that impacts this and how we look at this moving forward. And I think lastly, you know, the demand for open spaces, natural areas, recreation areas, water-centric activities are at an all-time high. If you look at the spending within those areas, it's never been higher. And people are thriving being outdoors. And I think that's what a healthy community needs. So it makes sense. So this project's objectives, the plan, is first and foremost is to fulfill the island's vision of creating Dubuque's gateway to entertainment and the Mississippi. And so you think about the land use patterns and what happens out there, that drives it. Secondly, and I think all of you have acknowledged this, we want to create a place where people of all ages, abilities, and background can experience Dubuque's beauty and high quality of life. And so the island has a really unique past and a really unique geographic location within your community that can kind of stitch that together. It's different from the North Port. It's different from the Millwork District, yet it connects to those or could connect to those. And so those are opportunities for us to think about as we move forward. Third, leveraging the great work that you and the Q are doing, those investments that you are beginning to undertake, those investments that you've made, the investments that the Q has made, we want to make sure we leverage that, get a great return so that this investment that you have all made, the $100 million, sees a greater return. How can we get two-for-one on the dollar? Fourth, you know, we're looking a little bit more regional. How do we attract people to say, hey, there's things that are happening here in Dubuque. 20 years ago, the buzz was about the port, then the Millwork District, the B Branch. You've done a lot of great things. But we really want to make sure that folks from outside are looking in and saying, we want to be a part of that. And then five, we want to make sure that the uses are driven by the market, which is why we have a very strong economic portion to this project and team. And we want to make sure that they're in sync, that we don't over-prioritize one use or not spend enough in certain areas. So that's really a critical portion of this. And I think a few additional things to add to this is we've spent a fair amount of time looking at the ordinances and policy that may impact development. So we've talked a little bit in the past about floodplain and floodway and what kind of impact those policies have. We've gone to the core and have talked to them about how we can work with them. We'll touch on that in a bit. And actually, that leads into seven, which is to look at the regulatory impacts by way of whether it's Fish and Wildlife Service, the Army Corps of Engineers, even the Coast Guard, as you think about barge traffic coming through the island or along the island. Eight, nine, and 10. So restoring the island's natural resources. An interesting thing to think about is that, for better or for worse, Schmidt Island would not exist if it wasn't a landfill. And the reason I say that is if you ever go down to Miller River View Park and you're walking around in the park, that is pretty close to the historic elevation of the landscape on the island. Well, when you bring in all the fill that was brought in over those years, the trash and debris, building up of the highway, that's actually what has elevated above the historic floodplain level. And so, you know, we've maybe used some of that and have benefited from some decisions that, you know, some might question. But I think that, you know, as part of this planning effort, we've really thought about how can we maybe become more in sync with the natural resources down there and thinking about how do we, what's the plan in terms of addressing some of the natural areas that have maybe not necessarily thrived because some of the decisions that were made in the past. You'll see a little bit about that. We want to evaluate the infrastructure and mobility opportunities. So as part of this plan's effort, we have met with the leaders of the various city departments, whether it's the water, sanitary, storm. We've also talked through, as part of the smart parking and mobility plan that is being led by Steve Sampson Brown, we've worked with Walker Consultants to identify, you know, opportunities to improve the parking situation, to look at the connectivity. And so that therefore is informing, which you're going to see. And then lastly, thinking about, and I think this is the phrase we've used often with ACOM and Chris, is to determine the highest and best use development on the island. Given all of these various layers, what is that? And that's what we're here to talk about. I do want to remind you, you are obviously very familiar with this, but what we're looking at here in terms of this plan, you know, there's a few key bullets here. Sustainable environment, preserving and enhancing the natural resources. That's directly in line with your five-year goals. A connected community. We talked about mobility and infrastructure. That's certainly something that we're working towards. Diverse arts, culture, parks, and recreation experiences. A vibrant, healthy, and safe community. As we get in, as Chris shares here, his work, financially responsible. So we're really trying to make sure that what we do here is in alignment with you. And I think you'll see that throughout this effort, we're doing a pretty good job of that. A quick refresher. In 2014, the community, in collaboration with DRA, developed this plan here. And that is what Alex had mentioned earlier, which really contemplated a series of land uses. As of today, this is the guiding plan that drives decisions as it relates to Schmidt Island. And so you'll see a number of uses that have been contemplated before. And again, it's conceptual, but you know, you now are seeing a new hotel. You are now seeing an improved casino. You are seeing opportunities for potential improvements that are going to fulfill that. And then when you look at the south side, you can see a number of uses that have been contemplated for the various areas here. And those have to be attested. In 2017, there was a placemaking plan. And you can see how that plays out here in the center. And this helped to prioritize public realm improvements that kind of contribute to the high quality of life. And the Veterans Memorial was one of those which has been moved forward and is noted right here. And then lastly, as you applied for the Destination Iowa grant, a plan was needed to see how the current casino vision and an amphitheater venue might come together. And so this plan was used for that. So a little bit about the development program. And so I mentioned, we're thinking about highest and best use. We're thinking about what's being driven by the market and what those opportunities are. And we've, when we met with you last, there were a number of specifically, as we dive in here, residential options that we contemplated. We've revisited that and have narrowed it down to what we think would be the preferred strategy moving forward. We've talked about opportunities for public realm improvements, and you'll see that. So we're really refining, right sizing, and making sure that we get the pieces to this puzzle correctly developed. This has come about through developer interviews. So about a year ago, we sat down and we met with developers from a regional perspective to get their feedback. We talked with various stakeholders. The Q has had a number of events where people have come down to the island to share their feedback. The market research that ACOM has developed, the development program, which is, we're going to share here in a second, the regulatory review, looking at costs for what the development options might be, policy considerations, and highest and best use. So all of these are, again, lenses that we're looking through to help define this. So from a living standpoint, one of the things that we're looking at is the development opportunities that would be in character with this. And so having, and I guess if I back up for a moment, I mentioned that the island is, historical use was a landfill. So you think about having, in some cases, eight, 10, 12 feet of rubble that we have to work with, you have to have a building that is structurally sound. So when we think about how to support that, it's most likely going to require deep foundations. That's something that's different than greenfield sites that might not be downtown. So we have to contemplate that. We also have to think about how do these complement some of the other land uses. So we've really kind of honed in on, in opportunity to have an apartment-type building that would look like this, could have the potential for parking underneath. This is a floor plan of the parking level. And I guess this would be kind of the levels two and three above that. And ultimately, you know, finding the right balance of the bedroom makeup and the bedroom sizing based on the market size, or based on the market demand. And so, you know, some, what we've heard is that people are, you know, excited about, they want to have their own place, but they want to have nice amenities. And so when we think about a quality of life, the opportunity to connect, we've been trying to think about what that right mix is. And I think, you know, we've been able to get pretty close to that. So what we're showing here is really that opportunity to leverage development that applies to all prospective audiences who may be looking to have a home down here. Secondly, the potential for a hotel. And so this would be in addition to the hotel that the Q is working on. And really, this is being driven by the market. There's an opportunity here to support, you know, some of the activities that are happening throughout the region. And when you look at the number of stays and the capacity right now within the community, we believe there's an opportunity for an additional hotel. Island mask, within the island master plan, we've talked greatly about the promenades. And when we say promenade, think of this as that long view that you have as you enter a space. Or it could be the river walk. That's that long, you know, beautiful picturesque perspective. And, you know, a lot of river-centric or lake-centric communities have these waterfronts that have a beautiful promenade. And we believe that Schmidt Island should have one that is equal to that, certainly equal to the port of Dubuque. Contemplating an ice arena addition that could support a second sheet of ice, but also could be used for four seasons, to contemplate uses at the ballpark or the ball fields that are currently there. And so here's what that might look like. We worked through a number of options. And ultimately, we feel as though this one here would allow you to have that eater retainment. You could potentially have a series, a concessionaire that could have a restaurant here. So you could come down here and spend three hours here instead of just showing up for a game and then leaving, you know? How do we keep people on the island longer? How do we keep them engaged with the river? How do we keep them engaged with the natural resources and making Dubuque a destination, or furthering the destination that it is, I should say? You'll also see that we've been looking at seasonal options. Hockey is obviously fantastic in that you have foot traffic and energy down there during the winter season. But not everybody gets the opportunity. So there is this potential for outdoor skating. And in the summertime, that same space can be used as a splash pad. It also could be used for roller skating. I mentioned destination play. Many people will drive a long ways for activities like this. When I say a long ways, 30 minutes, 45 minutes to an hour. If you can spend the entire Saturday from 11:00 AM till, you know, 6:00 PM, and you can sleep in your own bed at night, these are the types of things that you're looking for that are appealing to not just younger children that are age, their elementary age, but really looking all the way up to that teenage level where you might want something that's a little bit more adventurous, yet still safe. And so whether that could be, you know, outdoor bouldering, places for slides to go under areas, climbing up and over things, these are examples of that. And we would see this being a tremendous addition to what is happening to Schmidt Island already. Few more examples of how, you know, there could be this river theme that threads all of this, or ties all of this together, that talks a little bit about, there's an educational component that could talk about the history of the river, history of the island, the history of Dubuque, but then have this theme to it that is unique and only found within Dubuque. Having the potential for a recreation outpost is something that we see as a huge opportunity here, whether that be a potential for future water taxis that could come and go from the island, that could serve other destinations up and down the river, on both the Iowa side, the Wisconsin side, the Illinois side, where you could, again, spend the afternoon on the river. But then also, if you're going to create a place for taxis to arrive, we talked about the ecology of the island, and we'll share a little bit more about that. There could be a multi-purpose facility that, you know, perhaps there's concession sales, perhaps there's a place to fill up with gas, or also a laboratory space that nonprofit or an institution could use to further their educational needs. And so we want to find ways in which these buildings can be programmed all year round so that there is activity happening on the island throughout the seasons, but also throughout the day. Looking at the potential for improving fishing access on Piastas Channel. There are a number of floats up and down the river below locks and dams where there is a current that is rapidly moving up and down the river. Those tend to be very attractive spots to fish. When you think about ways in which we can get people to come to the island, the Piastas Channel, according to some of the discussions that we've had with fishermen and women, is a really, can be a great destination for fishing. And so we think this would be a great amenity that would serve all people and all users that, of course, like to fish. An observation tower. This has been contemplated in the placemaking plan. And we see this as a beacon that could be developed. And it could be equivalent to, you know, the Fourth Street Elevator. And the landmark that that is, this could be comparable to that. Being able to have that 360-degree panoramic view of one of the most beautiful Mississippi River Valleys that most people have ever seen. Looking at creating a boardwalk that could become, you know, a gateway into the island, a gateway from Wisconsin into Dubuque. And then lastly, you know, improving upon some of the RV park amenities that currently happen down there. Camping, lighting the bridge, which has been talked about for quite some time. And we believe that there's an indirect benefit to the community in terms of attracting people to come down there. That if you look at some of the other communities that have done this, places that were not once a destination, become a destination. Talk a little bit now about the natural resource side of things. So we have worked with Impact7G, Judy Joyce and her team have done a great job of really getting to know the island. And we've, through their work, they're ecologists and natural resource management professionals, were able to go out and evaluate the vegetation that exists on the island. And there is a direct relationship between that vegetation and the inundation of floodwaters. The more frequently the areas that flood, the most likely it's going to be the least diverse area of the island. Those areas that are what we would say kind of around the edges where the landscape rises up above the floodplain, there's a real opportunity to remove the buckthorn, to remove the honeysuckle, some of those plants that create this wall so you can't see out. Those are not plants that really should be there. And so from an ecology perspective, we can beautify, we can enhance, and we can really say that, you know, you are welcome here and that this woods is not a wall, that, you know, please come in. And so through their work, you can see that various zones, we've been able to work through a strategy so that over the next 10 years or so, you are able to really have a healthy, thriving ecosystem on the island. And there's a layer to this that's not shown here, but this is directly adjacent to one of the largest fish and wildlife refuges in the upper Midwest. And so when you think about the migratory birds, or even more specifically, those birds that might call this home, birding is big business. And not necessarily being a birder, but a father who, or my father is, I know that folks will travel fairly far to photograph, to observe, to enjoy that. And according to some of the research that Impact7G has done, it's a billion-dollar business. And so creating boardwalks or creating amenities that are not just something that is a really nice walk, could also have another layer to it that is, brings in people for various birding activities. So going to get back here to the restoration objectives again. And these are to support the various zones that have been identified here. We're looking at, you know, number one is creating spaces that are enjoyable for people, but are also great habitats. And I think right now, those are not in sync. So that's one of the key things. Two is, you know, the invasive plants that are down there need to be removed. And the longer those plants are there, the harder it is to remove them because they tend to overtake those native plants that should be there. And so this being a fairly disturbed area with the landfill and around it, there's an opportunity to seek out grants or other funding sources to remove those so that you can get a leg up on that. Third is looking at removing the low-quality plants that exist on the floodplain today and trying to diversify the floodplain and the landscape in and around the development to be more resilient. And so you've likely seen, or you've, I'm sure, talked about the Emerald Ash Bore. You know, right now, the island is predominantly You know, right now, the island is predominantly covered in maples. What happens when we have challenges with maple trees? The island would look very, very different. And so thinking about ways in which we can create habitats, get some sunlight on the forest floor, diversify the tree planting is essential. We talked a little bit about already improving wildlife habitat, and again, I think lastly, this is a, this is a key one, as with any, whether it's a building project, an engineering project, or an ecology project, is having a maintenance plan for how you manage the landscape long term. It's not something that we can just set and forget. It does require, you know, management, but that is also an opportunity for education. It's also an opportunity for partnership, and so those are things that we believe would really benefit the island as a whole. I'm not going to go through all of the details of this, but when you look at the number, the acres here and the impacts that this would have, Alex mentioned earlier, 220 acres, so approximately half of the island, if it is through, beautified, made more ecologically diverse, becomes a greater draw for partners, for birding enthusiasts, for those who enjoy the natural resources. There's a relatively low cost to begin some of the work on that. All right, so with that, I'm going to ask Chris if he could share a little bit about the economic lens that has led to this.
Thank you, Ryan. So when we think about the economic questions, we always start at that highest level, that sort of national perspective, because in many ways, we're now, February of 2024, like in the, you know, the dust from the last four years is finally starting to settle. Inflation is coming down. We're now starting to digest what 3% inflation really means, like the economy is figuring that out. But we also think about this reality that the last four years have actually changed a few things, and those create some opportunities for us. Like, we now have a group of pure remote workers who are focused on quality of life, and a number of them showed up here, came in the last four years. That means we have to think about a set of strategies to pursue more of them, and that means a conversation about quality of life, and to what extent does an island like Schmidt play a role in enhancing quality of life and attracting more of those kinds of workers. We think about this reality or this opportunity that the retail apocalypse, you've heard about that, I imagine? It's over, but now that begs us a fun question of, okay, well, we can think about retail again, well, what are the tenants? What are the rents? What is the right mix of activities? It has to be well-targeted, it has to be thoughtful, but we can have that conversation now. We couldn't have that conversation four years ago. And last but not least, we also think about housing. Housing is probably the one category where we're paying for choices or decisions that weren't made over the last 10 years, where we just simply didn't build enough housing. And now that creates this moment where we can have a conversation about housing on the island to think about, you know, what that means in terms of new housing. So thinking about how those top-line trends start to filter through and think about what happens on the island, we know that today, based on, you know, some cellphone data, that the island actually does a good job of keeping visitors for longer than normal, so they're extending their stays. So part of the whole strategy here is how do we make incremental improvements to further extend stays but also to attract people from two and a half to three hours away? Again, how do I get my Chicago friends to realize Dubuque is a pretty cool place to go to? And to get them to do that every year, maybe? So thinking about that market opportunity, but also this notion of Dubuque as this gateway to a much larger set of recreational opportunities. We always think about like a traverse city as that gateway? How do we play that role? Again, better food, a whole bigger conversation about our role in this region. We also think about ultimately this question of housing, and so as part of the study, we did identify a market for about 400, we'd say, high-end apartments. Again, that's a reflection and part of higher construction costs. It's going to be an expensive place to build, but we do think there's an opportunity in the island for some level of, of, you know, higher-end construction. So that's something that we've noticed as an opportunity. I think last but not least, we talk a lot about office markets, and I think, again, we're talking about pure remote work. We do think office will recover, it's going to take a few years, but the reality is demand is going to be slower than it was. And that's partially a reflection of COVID, but also a reality of that connection from office employment to office demand has been slowing for about the last 20 years. There are a lot more activities today that are going to be remote or hybrid than there used to be. So that's a big difference. So in terms of big picture, again, one of our challenges for the short term is we do need our construction costs to get into better alignment with rents. I would say back in 2018, the construction cost for, you know, a 50-story building in downtown Chicago, today, I think that, you know, that's going to build about a five-story wood frame building. Like, again, construction costs need to adjust a little bit more, and that'll take another year. Rents obviously have to grow as well, so there's a little bit of a balancing act. Again, that notion of this premium renter-occupied market opportunity, this idea of getting the island to be able to compete and help attract people from a longer distance, so how do we get that person from Chicago to stay for an extended weekend? Again, maybe it's a joint marketing with Galena. How do we, again, sell the region as opposed to just one place? But it's all about getting people to extend stays, that's the goal. But really, what we're ultimately talking about with Schmidt Island as we think about the tactical opportunities for the island is how do we identify a set of uses that can ultimately drive ground lease revenue, can generate property taxes, and can also grow sales taxes? And we think there's a strategy in there where we could actually achieve that. Again, we're not setting policy tonight, but we're trying to think pragmatically about what are the set of uses that blend and allow us to achieve all three? That's really the goal we've been thinking through as part of this process.
Alex, you want to come back up for a second?
No, thank you for, I think, a great summary of the work that has been done. Really want to highlight, going back even, sorry, Ryan, on this ecological work that was done by Impact 7G and Judy Joyce, who's an amazing, not only consultant, but really helped us see what the art of the possible is to make sure that we're investing really in the physical infrastructure, in the ecological infrastructure of the island. And so we were really shocked, number one, that, hey, we can actually go and attack some of these invasive species by just having a conversation with, whether it's U.S. Fish and Wildlife, going and talking to DOT, people just want you to have a plan. So I think for a very long time, many, there was a kind of this notion that, hey, we can't do anything, our arms are tied. Well, your arms are tied because you can't take a chainsaw and just go start whacking things, right? But if you hire an arborist, you listen, you have a plan, you go and you have partnerships, you can do it. Was then further excited that, hey, within, I mean, you can do the rough math there of a number of these different zones that we outlined, for less than a million, million and a half dollars, we can really improve the outlook. And when you talk to the people who utilize the island or are out there today, I think this would be a tremendous benefit. So really, just wanted to highlight that component. The other thing is, as we relates to the economic, not only analysis, but I think it's important to reiterate for you all, as well as for those viewing at home, is that we've worked together to take the profits of our nonprofit casino, which Q Casino, and the DRA, to, for a very long time, used to split those profits, 50% would go back to the city and 50% would go to charity. Well, we are now working together, as we have, and we've worked out a new lease where we split those profits three different ways. A third of the profits from the casino go directly to the city, a third go to charitable organizations, and now a third goes towards Schmidt Island development. So we have a dedicated revenue stream that may not be able to solve all the things that we described here, but it enables us really for the foreseeable future to be able to make these investments. So what we described here is very much a prioritization of the things that we want, where we want to focus those resources, what are the amenities that we think are going to be helpful for the community and how to move forward. And so I think it's really important to note that these are, as beautiful as the pictures are, this is really about the public dialogue and conversation that we have to help to set priorities so that we, as the DRA, the, you know, kind of quasi-public-private partner, can go and spend time to move these projects forward. And so one of the best examples that we were able to move forward with was right after we split those funds three ways, what that enabled us to do was to partner with the city to go and pursue destination Iowa funds from the state and the federal funds that were coming from the Biden administration to go and help try and apply for this grant application that is now moving forward with the amphitheater. And so because we had a dedicated revenue stream, we were able to supply some of those funds as matching grants to go and pursue. And so I love the phrase my kids use, and I use as well, is, you know, you stay ready so you don't have to get ready, right? And so this process is about staying ready about what our top priorities are so we know how to go and pursue. In addition to that, we've already made some public investments that says, hey, once we pay for the amphitheater, what's next? And in order to go and tackle all these other things, you really have to have a years-long capital project planning. And so this isn't an esoteric exercise, it is having a defined plan. And so what we've seen today is, again, how that worked, we sharpened the pencils, got together some costs, gone through some of the highest and best use, but I really wanted to make sure that we reiterated, this isn't say, hey, we need a check, we need money, we need different things, we really now need a plan. And we've done a great job working with Rick and the entire team here to do just that. So wanted to give that one reminder before Jill comes up and closes out this portion.
Thanks, Alex. So really, we're going to have a conversation at a later date, like we just mentioned, but there will be some key policy considerations to take under advisement. One is about residential, which was identified in the 2014 plan, but we need to reevaluate the permissible uses within the PUD to include residential. We're going to have to be able to partner and reevaluate ground lease terms and also collaborate to secure subsidies to prepare the island for development. So one of those would be, for example, to elevate land out of the floodplain. So all of us are here to answer any questions you might have in the work session. There are some additional staff here that sit on those weekly meetings, and we're open for discussion. Thanks.
Great. Well, thank you, Jill, and thank you, everybody. This was a great presentation. Questions, discussion? Yeah, Mr. Jones?
I think we all got the same email from a local business leader and friend who's paying attention to things all the time, and he had, he went through the presentation electronically and was pretty happy with everything that he saw, but he said, how about owner-occupied residential? He said, he knows people, I guess I know people, that like to live in nice places that would sooner own them than pay rent for them. So I'd just like to get that on the radar, that that might have some condos or something along that line in the conversation. Whether it makes economic sense or not is, I guess, yet to be seen. And his other two suggestions, and they both turned up in the pictures, so I think they are on people's minds, were that curling is a growing sport in the area, and he got ice, we should have curling, and, okay, and climbing. And I did see it looked like kind of a three-dimensional climbing wall in one of the sketches. So I hope those things stay in the forefront for Terry, he's a smart guy, and he's right on these three things, that they need to be talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yeah, Mr. Smart, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like a lot of this, I've been talking to neighbors about this whole lovely project as it's coming about, and one thing that they would like to see, which it is mentioned briefly, is a restroom at the memorial, at the Vets Memorial Plaza, because they said that's kind of a shame that the vets don't have easy access to a restroom. And I said, I guess I never thought of that. So that's been one thing that's been discussed, but that's all I have, so.
Thank you. Ms. Farber, and then Mr. Rez.
Yeah, I would like just to echo what Mr. Jones said about the condos or the apartments, whether they're going to be for rent or not, for purchase, and then also the size. I think there was some concern that it would be not just one and two bedrooms, but maybe three bedrooms for families maybe, as opposed to senior citizens or whomever your target market is for living and working down there. And then also, on behalf of the ice at the arena, I think it's a great opportunity, if you will, to do the expansion as you guys have and to talk to, have you talked to the University of Dubuque about some of their needs with the two new university teams? I think there's some flexibility there also with the junior team from the high school in terms of their usage of the ice. It might be interesting to partner with them for more information and for some of the use, because I think that's really an ideal spot for them to have some time and to participate, and also maybe to be some of your best ambassadors for the use of that future space. But it's a great layout, and I very much appreciate the presentation.
Keep going, I'll address a bunch of the topics. Sure, sounds good. Yeah, thanks, Alex. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Rez.
All right, thank you. I have several things. Thank you, there's some exciting possibilities here. I love it that it's a nice welcoming area, welcoming our friends from Wisconsin and points east. So my concern with condos and townhouses and apartments is, will all the, do you have a plan that all the land actually will remain city-owned? So that, yes, like, so I live in a condo now, but I don't own the land of the condo, right? I just own that portion of the building. So is it possible that we would, we meaning the city of Dubuque, remain the owners of the land? A couple of things also, since it's going to be shiny and beautiful and natural and a place to go, you know, as city-owned property, do we want it to be a high-end resort, or do we want it to be public spaces available for everybody, or a combination of both? As, you know, the memorial there is a beautiful, and the park there with the campground, that also is inclusive. And so I'm hoping that we remain to the idea that it's going to be, include everybody, and there are things for everybody there in Dubuque. My, also my question, if there's an apartment building, is that going to, you've probably gone through this, but will that interfere with the hotel stays because of maybe people want to turn their place into an Airbnb? And so I, you know, I just wanted to see that, what your thoughts about that? A couple of things that I've been thinking about for the island is, you know, talk about the highest and best use, we have those diamonds there, baseball diamonds, and I've played many games down there in the adult softball leagues, and I would say that, you know, they're busy, but is that the highest and best use to have three full softball diamonds and the one specialty diamond that I think we ought to keep? But one of those, I mean, maybe you've talked about that with Marie Ware and the city manager, about possibly using one of those diamonds for one of the areas that you're talking about. You know, that southeast diamond, if you raise it up for a little hotel, another hotel or apartment building, that's maybe enough space for, and, you know, faces the beautiful Mississippi River. So if you've talked about that. And finally, since I do a lot of biking down there and I go over that, what's going to be an improved bridge, but I go from the island out to the pathways and go down to the park, AY McDonald Park, I always thought, wouldn't that be cool to have a rope bridge? It's a walking bridge, of course, over that area that would go from that tower you were talking about over to the other side where the boatyard is. Now, there's obviously issues being, but, you know, as you talked about, Mr. Dixon, if you go to them with a plan to say, yes, this is a flood wall, and it's got a, it is mainly a flood wall, what kind of effect would, you know, a walking bridge have on that area? Is there a problem with that? Anyway, that's, I always thought that would be kind of cool, and people love walking bridges, you know, halfway up the tower, that's where the entrance is, and it goes over to, and then you could just walk right over that AY McDonald Park and other places along the Mississippi. Anyway, so since you're taking down all those things, I'd love to hear your responses when we're done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Got a long list there, Alex. Yeah, yeah, good. Yeah, Ms. Bethel, go ahead.
The, as it relates to the restoration of the natural resources, I have the pleasure of serving and get to sit in with the Friends of Mines of Spain Board, and an incredibly active, wonderful group of individuals here in our city who have for decades cared for that space. It's inspiring to sit with them, I have to say. They are moving forward with a plan in collaboration with the state of Iowa to make sure that 200 years from now, we have hardwoods. And so when we're all gone and our children are all gone, the Mines of Spain is going to have the removal of invasive species and the establishment of hardwoods all over again that have, you know, not been there and not been maintenance. And so the maintenance of the property, I am excited, actually, I'm thrilled with the natural resources portion of the presentation, because I think there are so many individuals, when we talk about what would be available and accessible to people without cost, to be able to access those spaces to be with the river. Another thought I had was, and I feel like we've talked about this in the past, the idea- Another thought I had was, and I feel like we've talked about this in the past, the idea to rent kayaks or paddleboards for citizens of our city, to be able to go down and rent for the day, for two hours. And I, I know, I feel like we've had those conversations before. I just want to make sure that, in addition to creating an attraction to bring people to our city and keep them here for extended stays, that we think about what a wonderful resource we have for our residents now, because if we get people to move here, they want to use it too. They don't want to have to just be guests in their own city. And so I appreciate all of the thought that goes into not just what will we be able to establish that is going to be a revenue stream, but what is going to maintenance and create the property so that 200 years from now, we have beautiful natural space. Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Thank you. Similar to some of my colleagues, one of the things that I'm really excited about is the restoration, and of course, the added tree diversity. Nothing could be worse than if something happens to the maple trees and, you know, we lose them all, so that's really important. The other thing that I was excited to hear about was the birding activities, that is such a huge industry. And I don't know if they've been part of the conversation, or if they would be in the future, but our friends with the Audubon Society here are extremely interested and knowledgeable about how we can leverage those, that kind of access. So I'm hoping that, that we are taking advantage of the expertise of those outside organizations that might be in our community, like the Friends of Mines of Spain or the Audubon Society. So I hope we keep those in mind. And then my other comment was related to the residential. I also feel like this is a great place that our entire community and people in the region want to enjoy. And I want to make sure that if we do create housing there, that we don't create an elitist place, you know, where sometimes with housing, you have the, oh, not in my backyard kind of thing. And that would be of a concern to me. So I was really excited with so much of the opportunities that are coming our way, so I can't wait to hear more. Thank you.
Why don't we go ahead and cover some of that stuff that you've been tracking here with these questions, and we'll go from there for more discussion.
That's great. And feel free to hop in, and members of the team as well. I think the first even, let's say overarching comment, because I think what's great is I've gotten to know each and every one of you kind of individually. Rick, I need more jokes, by the way, like, we've fallen off, we've fallen off. But, but no, in all seriousness, you know, I work for you. Like, you know, I think just to help to set the tone in a sense of, you know, this role, this nature of this quasi-public-private, you're not speaking to an outside developer that you provide a, an aspiration to, that you hope that we incorporate into the plan. And so it's almost as, I want us to begin, as you as a body, to think of us and the collective work that we do, is that you all are in a position to place orders that we carry out. And what I mean, place orders, it means like to say, this is what we would like to achieve with these parameters, and then go use this public money on this public land, go galvanize the private resources to effectuate what we'd like to do. So hopefully that sets in place a reference point, that this, the conversation is less, I hope you would, and this is what will, as opposed to, this is what we think we can support, you know, in getting behind, something that has these characteristics. You weigh out with the group of, how do you get the right level of revenue versus right level of public amenity? But I think, you know, what we are seeking is, is help us with the priorities so that we create the blueprint of plans to help fulfill the aspirations that we want. So that is just kind of one thing I think wanted to just share, because as the theme that will go through all of these different components, as we talk about whether it's the tactics or how we kind of do that, this is different. This is land you own, as well as revenue that the mayor sits on our board at the DRA, as well as the city manager and two city council people, right? So to that end, this is a good session, and as you kind of continue this dialogue along, is place more orders. Place more orders, and we'll go get it done. So to that end, restrooms at Veterans Memorial. Again, this is another one of those that says, hey, if this is a priority, you say, hey, DRA, we'd like as a part of the development plan to go price that out, see how much it would cost, where we would place it, how do you maintain it, all those other different things, and we'd like to see this in the development plans within the next couple of years. Check, and we move on. Like, that's literally how easy these types of things we can be. As we think of the environmental plan, if we said, hey, that is a high priority, we'd like you to kind of develop piecemeals of how do we get through it? Let's pay for the amphitheater, don't overextend yourself, but I'd like, you know, one of those projects to get done over the next seven years, so that we're off into the races. That's how this can work. This notion of condos, we'll talk at a very high level about, let's say, residential and the different components. We have the ability on land, if you bring density of meaning, many people utilizing an area, whether that be hotel or apartments, you're going to be able to generate more revenue than having lower density, right? So just more people utilizing the space means there's more revenue that's generated that goes, that moves forward. Because there's a significant amount of land that we have, Councilman Resnick, you're spot on as it relates to, what is the highest and best use? And every question that all of you asked, we have, let's say, discussed. There is some component of the plan, let's say, that would be outlined. But where this gets specific is, again, going back to place the order of, how do we have a great ball field, but how do we have the highest and best use of those components? What are those cost implications? And then go and, let's say, move forward. But as it relates to the condos and Airbnb, I want to make sure I hit that appropriately. This, again, is, we have an opportunity to be able to say, if we look at the island, where on that pendulum would you like to be? There's super-high-end, let's say gated community, there's, let's call it affordable workforce housing, that we know we need all of them, there's squarely in the middle, let's call it, middle-class, let's call it excursion, let's say retreats, there's cabins, there's RVs, there's all these other things. And so this is the, I don't know if it's the Gosling film or whatever, is the kind of, tell me what you want, you know, kind of, you tell us what you want, and we'll go build it, right? And so I think, as a body, figuring out how you'll have that conversation to be able to say, hey, this is kind of what it feels where we want to be, where from an economic analysis, let's say, does that shape out? And then how do we go about a process to build, whether it's the public-private kind of partnerships, to effectuate and how that moves forward? So on this hotel stays and Airbnb, all these things are very, like, there aren't these defined lanes, meaning a home is a hotel these days in terms of Airbnb. Like, if you go on Airbnb right now, there's places that you wouldn't expect right here in Dubuque that are selling for, you know, $100 a night, you know, right here. So I think there's less of a concern as to what is the, how the market will react, that it wants to utilize those dwelling units. But I think what we heard loud and clear through the work that Acom and Chris outlined is that there is a demand for housing, which we all know, there is a demand for higher-end housing, there is a demand for almost an Airbnb hotel-like product. And so, again, wherever it is you want to be on that pendulum, is creating retirement homes for people who live here who want to downsize and who want to have a boat, plus a home that they own, that has broader implications about, you know, the land use. And so we won't get into that here, but I think where you want to be on that pendulum will then implicate kind of how you want to leverage the land and the policy implications associated with it. So again, that's a, tell us what you want. The rope bridge, I love it. It's in the master plan from 2014. You could, you know, boats don't go across that Piazza Channel, and that could be a hub for recreation, where you could imagine, you can bike or walk along the flood, the flood wall on the Kerpen Boulevard side, and walk over to the, to the island, and then walk in and around those walkways. And again, like I said, that's a matter of prioritize that, go get a cost, can you afford it? Do we have the money to do it? Boom, we're off to the races. The restroom, I think, yeah, we talked about the restrooms at the Veterans Memorial. The public accessible components, I think that falls in line, you kind of get where, where along, how much land do you want to dedicate to those components? But that is something at the essence. And what I'd like, maybe Ryan, is to go back through the plan and highlight some of the components that really speak to public pieces. And we'll get there once I finish these last two. But I think that'll help to visualize what we're, what we're talking about. You know, renting the paddleboards, again, so, you know, I think Kurt would be comfortable, but we've had deep conversations with the River Museum about how we could work together to find a location on the island where we could partner up to have a facility, one of those outdoor recreation posts. Imagine if the River Museum, you know, staffed that, we helped philanthropically to get the physical equipment, to get the building, but then they ran it as a part of the overall River Museum experience. And so, again, in order to make that a reality, you have to have the conversations. That's not reflected in the physical report that we're delivering, but know those conversations are going in the background, and also then saying, hey, are there grants that could help us, that we could go after, to help make that a reality? There's a fishing outpost as well, for people who don't want the slot machines that I love over on our side, but they want to be enjoying the outdoors, how do we have a physical place and incorporate that as well? The birding activities, absolutely. I mean, I think we got the expert in Ryan's dad who's on. And look, I think what's important, as we start talking about the rest of the island, there's a number of user groups. And so, you know, we think about this every day from the DRA, but we are deeply, deeply understanding of that people utilize this island today. And so we're doing this in a public manner to reiterate that, hey, this housing discussion goes all the way back to 2014. This housing discussion goes all the way back to the master plan that this body has already approved. And so as we go and talk about the people who are leveraging these assets, there will absolutely need to be a component where we hear their voices clearly, we hear their voices directly, we hear all the different uses of the ball fields, all the water sports club that is, that takes place. In many cases, it's about enhancing the amenities that already exist, but in some cases, look, there's going to be some tough decisions that we make, that have implications on the economics that go to the city, as well as the uses there. And so hopefully, I've touched on a number of the components, but I don't know, if there are any comments or questions based upon some of those responses, before we get to Ryan to showcase some of the public components, I think, want to just pause there.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Wethel.
I ask this question because I believe it will be asked to me by constituents. When we talk about the floodplain, and I know we've had presentations previously about the 100-year floodplain and the 500-year floodplain, and where we would position structures to be built. I noticed the parking garage would be on the first level. I would assume that that would be helpful in those kind of decisions. But could you speak a little bit about how we can have that discussion in our community about how we will ensure that this investment is safe?
That's great. And I'll have Ryan kind of come up as well, in talking about some of the analysis. We've had Strand, who's helped us out, and Mike Jansen, who you all know, who was very critical in the B branch. He's a part of the consultant team who was doing all these things. And so so much, let me say, from a commercial perspective, as a businessperson, is to say, what we want to be able to do is to help you all as a city, the owners of this land, achieve the highest and best use of these natural resources. There are some places that it's not commercially viable to try to raise, for instance, Miller Riverview Park out of the floodplain. That is one where let, let the Mississippi River, let's say, dictate when we get to use it, right? And so don't, you know, try to outthink the Mississippi River. On the casino, what we've tried to do is to say, hey, we need to build at the highest point of the island to make sure that we are clearly outside of any type of impact that maybe happened from the flooding. And so therefore, our hotel is being built at the highest point of the island. As it relates to other portions of the island, as it gets over to the marina, as well as into less of the ball fields, because that's actually one of the highest points as well. You know, so much of the development activity is directly, is directly impacted in a place where we will need to be thinking about, if we want to pursue, whether it's housing or any other type of commercial development above and beyond what we have, there may need to be some infrastructure dollar spent in order to effectuate some of those plans, right? And so as we look at the economics, I think this is, there's considerable study and work that has been done to be able to say, where does the flooding exist today? Where do we need to be looking at development? But I would say is, all over the world, there is development that takes place on waterfronts, some of the most highly valuable that goes through. But you need to go in through it with kind of clear eyes, but there are ways, just as you described, that by having a garage, if that floods, right, you know, it's okay, you get the spray wash and go through, but you don't want that to be in your living room. So that's it from a commercial side. You know, Ryan will tell you much more details about the technical aspects that we've gone through, but maybe Ryan, if you hit that and some of the other public components.
All right. Thank you, Alex. So to address the floodplain first, the example we had shown, the base flood elevation, which is the 100-year flood elevation on the island, is elevation 611. And so there's a couple ways in which we would look at things. Depending on the amenity, so if there's a health, safety, welfare, and occupancy component to it, we would put those in one category. If it's a park and recreation amenity where it can become inundated, we put those in another category. Certainly also with health, safety, welfare concerns, but something that you can close down easily, you're not evacuating folks. So in the case of the residential, we would look to have the parking be at the first floor. So, and then you would have seven to eight feet above that, which is where the finished floor elevation would be. So that puts you at about elevation 618, 619. And if we have floodwaters that are at that level, we will have, be having a conversation that is, you know, with significant impacts. And so as a rule of thumb on this plan, what we've been looking at is trying to be above elevation 614, which is the 500-year floodplain elevation. And so, you know, again, this, those elevations are a derivative of the modeling that the Army Corps of Engineer holds. And so our team was able to get a copy of that model and look at hypothetical inundation scenarios, if you were to make impacts to the floodplain and the floodway, which is the area in which you are not putting structures in. It's, in terms of, it'd be the Miller Riverview Park along the eastern side, and all the way down towards the boat ramp. We certainly can pull up a map at some point. But we would be looking to elevate areas that are not in the floodway, those that are in the floodway, and if they are of residential, would be at above 614. In the case we showed, we're looking at 619, so we're trying to go a little bit above and beyond to future-proof us. And I guess the last point I'd make about that, we don't know where things are going to go in the future. There's been, over the last, you know, 75 years, three events that have been darn near or have actually exceeded the 100-year floods. And so I guess I would just say that those, that model is based on historical data. And so, you know, future-proofing and being resilient is certainly something that we're thinking about, which is why we have the Strand team to help us. So to address some of the other questions that Alex had pointed out, I would, I would say that one of the greatest amenities to the public would be the restoration of the island. I think it seemed like there was a great deal of appreciation for that. And I would look at this as almost, while it's not an arboretum, I would look at it as a living laboratory. It's an opportunity where you could potentially study the riverine ecosystem, where we can talk about the impacts of development on migratory birds and how they can work, you know, in harmony. It'd be an opportunity to have some of those stand-up paddleboard, kind of creative classes, where maybe you're doing a stand-up paddleboard class, while you're also learning about the ecological systems on the island as it relates to floodplain, floodwaters, relationships. And I think that would be considerable, and you just think about the story from bluffs to the backwaters that could be told right here on Schmidt Island would be pretty powerful. Secondly, a couple of the other key additional, what I'll call, public-centric quality-of-life amenities, things that you can do for free or for very low costs any given day of the week. Certainly, this would be something that you could enjoy and... Certainly, this would be something that you could enjoy, and there's technologies out there where you could actually, Milwaukee would be an example of the Hone Bridge, where you can actually have the bridge be yours for one night for a cost, or you can enjoy it every night if you're not willing to invest in something like that. But the color-changing LED aspect, creating that kind of welcoming gateway could be one. Camping or glamping, depending on your perspective and what, you know, you feel comfortable with, maybe for a fee, this would be something, but it's something that would be for more people than perhaps some of the other amenities on the island. RV parks, again, yes, very much a public-centric quality-of-life amenity. Boardwalks, the observation towers, the public fishing, all of these are certainly amenities that you could use. And I'll go back. We talked a little bit about the ropes course. You know, there's concessionaires out there that specialize in this, that could operate it, you know? So, maybe, depending on the ownership, you know, there are some legalese behind this that you'd have to investigate. But that's something that could become an attraction, and maybe you get limited exposure to it, but could be something that creates additional demand. The climbing aspect, which we had shown as part of potentially bouldering in the ice center, that came up earlier. I think the play areas, you know, these are all elements that you could do on a Tuesday night. Skating, splash pads. So, I think enjoyment of the beauty. You know, so really, I would say, the majority of the components within this program would be for everyday use by Dubuque citizens and enjoyment by those who choose to drive here or fly here to appreciate these as well. So, I don't, I think that answers your questions. I guess if you have any follow-up on the quality of life, I could certainly go deeper into that.
Thanks for mentioning people flying here like that. So, we can keep going, too, if we have other questions, but I have a couple. Mine are some technical ones. If you can go to the very last slide that you have there. So, so far, we've talked about, first of all, I just want to say thank you for this presentation. I think this is, it is, it's really interesting and fascinating to think about the possibilities in a place like this, in a way that we haven't very much. But we've had a lot of these conversations lately. I think those of us on the DRA board have been a little more privy to it potentially because we've seen it over and over again. But even publicly here in this space, we've had some really good discussions about what really is possible here. What can we think about as we do this? So, thank you for all your work on this. Coming at us with the details about it, I think, is extremely helpful to have a much more informed public conversation about it. On that note, you know, I'm thinking about how we can get some of these things done. Alex, your points are good ones. You know, it's basically, you know, this is, this is public land, the city council, who, you know, we represent the city of Dubuque and the people who live here. We get the opportunity to provide some pretty specific direction to you. And I think a lot of that would come in our goal-setting session. Some of these things are kind of big. You know, we've, it's kind of like with the, you know, the Schmidt Island Master Plan and pushing that forward, things like the amphitheater, you know, that'll be coming in the next couple of years. Some of these larger items, like, let's say, a new sheet of ice, you know, another building that's going to be added to a building that already exists there, it's a pretty big deal. We'd have to have a pretty big conversation about it. That would be a goal-setting session that I think we talk about. But some of the things that are on this slide are a little bit different. They're not entirely goal-setting. It's a little more how do the policy works as we go through, you know, every phase of this discussion. So, I'm curious to know, if you could explain a little bit more for everybody's benefit, I think ours, but then also the public's. You know, when you say, work with the city to reevaluate the permissible uses within the PUD to include residential, can, I guess, as briefly and succinctly as possible, kind of share with us what that would mean to make any changes like that? You know, and I don't want to get too specific here, because then we start to talk about details that are really specific to certain projects and those kinds of things. But, you know, Wally, if we're going to make the changes, what kind of things exist now down there? What kind of changes are we looking at that we would need to pursue if we wanted to do something like that?
Yeah, so, a lot of the presentation you had here before tonight, especially with the residential, it was included, it was removed from the list of permitted uses. When you talk about reevaluating it, it'd be putting it back in the PUD ordinance. We look at the conceptual plan, layout, and design with regards to that. And just to touch on the floodplain stuff, I'm the one to make sure that the floodplain works in our office, so just to let you cover that. And the DNR, by the way. But including that into our planning and development to encourage housing, because that is a primary goal of the city right now, is we need more housing. So, you know, revisiting that, having the conversation, that would require us to go through a whole process. We have to go through the zoning advisory commission, we have to go to the city council. There'll be public hearings, there'll be opportunity for the public to speak with regards to four against some of the proposals. So, all that is handled through that public hearing process before you. But then also, a lot of the stuff's already included in the plan, and it's already part of the existing conceptual development plan layout for the site. So, you know, there is a public process. We're very transparent, and it goes through this body, and the public will have an opportunity to comment on a lot of this, so.
I appreciate that. I think that's very helpful to know, that it's a process that isn't different than anything else we do with any other, any other area of the city that's like this, that's in a planning unit development. Point number two up there, partner with the city to reevaluate ground lease terms. So, this is probably more of an economic development type of side of this thing, but, you know, this is, if I'm understanding this correctly, and so the rest of the community can understand this, this is basically, the city owns a lot of riverfront property. We have reevaluated lease terms with various different companies and organizations that use that property now. That's essentially the same thing we're talking about here, right? Is looking at this and seeing, what do we need, you know, what is the city, what was the best for the community of Dubuque as far as lease terms go and what those leases are used for? Is that essentially what I'm, am I describing that correctly?
That's essentially, and I think, a great example of what Councilman Resnick asked, was to say, we have four ballfields. We think we have, let's say, maybe highest and best use for a great baseball field and maybe, let's say, a great softball field. But then the other fields, could that be something else? And I'll just throw out of what you described earlier, which is, let's say, condo or riverfront residential property. If that were something that we needed, that we wanted to pursue, what we've worked with Marie on is that we received a federal grant back in the day to go and help to make those ballfields. If we needed, if we wanted to have that as a potential of an opportunity, we would need to work with staff and with everyone here to say, hey, we need to buy out, basically, that requirement, that that be, let's say, green space and move it to a different use of what Wally just walked through. But then, if you were to pursue that and to say, hey, if you said, I would like to have residential or condos or whatever that may be on there, we would need to work out with the city to say, hey, how could there be a process to basically effectuate, whether it's some type of lease, in order to be able to take advantage of the newer desired use? And so, I think what this is, is the development plans that were approved by the city, we use those as a blueprint to say, go and build this. And so, that has, we use it as a blueprint at the DRA to say, the master plan said it wanted an amphitheater, so we went and pursued an amphitheater. And guess what? We're getting an amphitheater. It said we wanted to have a new hotel. And guess what? We've worked together to reevaluate lease terms, and we're getting a new hotel. And so, I think of that same, we were very clear and direct on the land that Q and DRA, let's say, own, and that's why we now see $100 million redevelopment. It's, if we deliver those same, let's say, specific goals and metrics, we can make this happen on other places. But I think when we say it's working, it's pretty esoteric. It's just to be able to say, what do you want? How much does it cost? And then what are the policy or the land use implications to effectuate those goals?
Yeah. Hopefully, that makes sense. I think it's a really helpful discussion, because, you know, sometimes when you look at all these really cool-looking things, it's easy to see those pictures and say, we're going to have that by next year. And we've got a little bit more work to do before we get there. We have to, we have some conversations to decide, what do we want there? How do we want that to look? And the process to get there has some steps to it.
Right.
Great. Other questions or discussions? Mr. Resnick, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you for answering my questions and talking about those things specifically. I tell you what, I know you've, I'm thinking about timing now, and I know you've already started with renovations and things are moving, and you perhaps want to keep it moving. And I appreciate your reaching out to the citizens of Dubuque, which is, as Mayor said, we're representing them, and you would like our input. I just, you know, I'd like that you have a great committee who is looking after this. I don't want too many cooks to spoil the broth here either, so, you know, this, you know, a little bit of this, a little bit of that, that may be improving things, it may not be. So, as far as I'm concerned personally, if you look at the mission statement in our cityofdubuque.org, I think it says it all as far as planning this, this place over here at the chaplain Schmidt Island. And it says that we are financially sound with residents receiving value for their tax dollars, which I think is one of your upper goals. Achieving goals through partnerships, you're reaching out to other people. And then, it's our mission to deliver excellent services that support urban living, contribute to an equitable, sustainable city, plan for our future, and facilitate access to critical human services, which maybe is talking about that bathroom at Veterans Memorial there. But anyway, but in general, that's, if you come with a plan like that, that's exciting, and I think we're willing to support that. Of course, if we wait all the way to August and to, maybe, maybe that's not a problem. Maybe these kind of things can happen in the next few years. I'm just wondering about the timing as you see it.
No, that's, that's great. And so, what's phenomenal about this plan is that this is, we have to think in the generations that Councilman Wethel kind of mentioned, of being able to say, what is it that we want to achieve, let's say, for the generations? Because there will be decisions that we make as a result of this planning work that will, that will set the tone for really the next 100 years of this public space. And I think we have to be comfortable and confident in that, in that we're going to do the best commercial decision as well as community decision, once we get all the information. So, then, separate from that, there are some, let's call it, near-term indications that we need quickly in order to be able to make sure that we're using the best resources of our fairly compensated consultants, as well as others who are engaged. And so, what I mean by that is to say, if you want us to continue path, down this path of having some form of residential to be considered on the island, that is a near-term that we, that we would like to have, and let's say, you know, within the next four to six weeks. Like, you know, reasonable to be able to say, hey, without specificity, we've done our, you know, work, we've listened to constituents, we've done whatever it is that you need to do. And again, it doesn't need to be a formal vote or anything else, but there's enough time that Wally, you know, Rick, you know, Jill, we're all, Steve Sanson Brown, to go and say, hey, we need to go through the process that Wally just outlined. Like, that's city council talking to city staff, just that, that communication. The reevaluating lease terms is if you say, hey, residential, we would like you to do that, it's almost, you know, part and parcel then to be able to say, hey, what does an actual business transaction kind of look like? So, within that four to six weeks, to be able to evaluate there. The, the next, on to point three, which I don't want to skip over, is to be able to say, if there is city-owned land that requires some remediation, or in this case, elevation out of a floodplain, for the city to be able to directly reap those financial or public amenity benefits, that is something that I think lends itself to the more August, or let's call it the goal-setting in budget of those things. Because that, that takes time. What does the overall look like? But even that has to be done in the context of, what is the private development that we want? What is the existing state of the land? What is the investment of infrastructure that needs to be done in order to, let's say, raise it out of the floodplain? How much money would we make back? And how would this also continue to be a public amenity for use of people within the community? But again, all those discussions, for the most part, are done really between council and staff. We here at DRA, we're just helping to facilitate, let's say, this discussion, because we have resources that are now dedicated towards helping you to realize the goals of council. So, hopefully, that helps to be able to say, you all will dictate the timing of a lot of this, because you all have the purse strings as to how you want to move forward.
All right, thank you for that. And I know the mayor usually asks for consensus, and maybe we're not even looking for specific items, but for me personally, I would like it that you could study some kind of condo opportunities, and you put it through all these matrix and matrices. And, and for me, I also think, considering the highest and best use, maybe we should consider what we had talked about, perhaps using some of the area currently used as softball fields. That's, again, what I would hope that we could consider, but maybe that's for another time. And I thank you for your, your time and your answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mike.
Mike Van Milligan, City Manager. So, I would point out that there were 36 slides in this presentation, and 35 said next steps for discussion at a later date. And that's those three points right there. So, really, tonight is not a night to make any decisions. It's to get, gather all the facts that you possibly can, so that you're prepared to start making decisions after tonight. And as Alex said, that could be as early as four to six weeks to move through a, the process that Wally described, that would be the zoning commission and the long-range planning commission and community input, and then for you to make a decision about amending the PUD for residential. That would be one example of a decision that may come soon, and some may come later, but none of them are meant to come tonight.
That's right. Yeah, and to be very clear is, I'll use a second sheet of ice, which has probably been discussed for 10 years or so, right? Tonight is not about, oh, we're approving a plan, or this is what's moving forward, but it's a highest and best use. And then, there's a whole litany or menu of items. And then, just like you all do through goal-setting, is to be able to say, here is what we would like to see, as Mike just described. And then, I think, then you charge us to go and try to take those Lego pieces and say, hey, here's what we think we can kind of move forward with. We think this is about right where it is, then, hey, let's go and engage banks, private developers, local communities, local, local groups, to be able to move forward.
Any final pieces to wrap us up for the evening here?
Mr. Mayor, I think what's very important, and thank you for that last statement, and because I want to make sure that I stay ready so that I don't have to get ready, is the appreciation for the public-private.
My wife, Andrew, will load that. Hopefully, we could, this is recorded, I think, so.
Let me say it again, just for, so what I think is extremely important is the, that we open up the doors for the public-private partnership, as you're looking at the different kinds of developments, whether it's housing, whether it's the bike path or the other amenities down there, and to make sure that we have ample time for discussion about budgetary or banking or whatever it is to basically meet the bottom-line requirements on that. So, thank you.
That's great. And last, Mr. Mayor, is, we're talking about a lot of things that are, let's say, development, construction, kind of coordination, but there are so many things that we can be doing right now to be able to, taking more advantage of the island. So, groups in the community should be having 5Ks on the island. We should be having walks. There should be more parades. There should be, there's public parks, there's the water sports club, there's the marina, Catfish Charlie's, there's all these great things that we can do today. And so, I think it's this juxtap, and you can come and play slots, you can come play table games, and all these different things that you can do on the island. But I think this is a great public resource that, without any of this happening, you know, the citizen of Dubuque can come down and take advantages today. And I think, more than anything else, it's just, let's dream big, but then let's, let's have a blueprint that we can move forward.
All right. Well, Alex, everybody, the whole team, thank you very much for spending time with us tonight to talk about this and get this out into public discussion. We really appreciate that. I do see that we have a closed session at the end of this. Crenna was watching me. I saw it out of the corner of my eye, making sure I didn't raise the hammer. So, I'll take a motion, please, to enter into closed session.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I will have the council go into closed session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Code of I O to discuss purchase or sale of real estate.
Second. Got a motion by Jones and a second by Resnick. For the record, the attorney the city council will consult with on issues to be discussed in closed session is City Attorney Crenna Brumwell. Andrew, would you take the roll, please?
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Wethel.
Motion passes 7-0. We are in closed session.[1789.63]